All right, at 6 o'clock, I'd like to call the, what are we, February 19th, Meeting of the Board of Selectmen to Order with the first thing being the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we do have a quorum of the board here tonight, but we, in usual circumstances, the chairman and vice-chair are both excused, so I am going to take over for the night. Hopefully, my return to the seat will only last about 45 minutes. I'm sure everybody's pulling for that. What I'd like to do is start with approval of the minutes. If anybody has any motions.
Move to approve the minutes of February 5th, 2019, public and non-public.
Is there a second? Second by Larry. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Move to approve the public and non-public minutes dated February 14th, 2019.
We need a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. I'd like to skip to item B, since it looks like Bob Watson is here, and we can get him in and get him out, if that's okay with everybody. So, yes, thank you. We need you to just introduce yourselves.
Sure, my name is Bob Watson. Been a town resident for about 10 and 1/2 years, member of the fire department for just over a year. Here to request use of the fire department's training mannequin. So this is related to my work in the fire department, but it's independent of that, co-teaching a fitness class that is open to all firefighters in the area. The class is without charge, so my co-instructor and I are gathering resources from our department. She's a member in Atkinson, and we've also gotten resources from our members, people who are coming to the class, folks in Plastow have brought hose rolls and things like that. So we're looking to be able to use the rescue mannequin in our classes.
Okay, great.
Move to approve lending the fire department rescue dummy to the fire fit class being held at the YMCA in Plastow.
Second. All right.
Just a quick one?
Go ahead.
Is this more than one time?
Yeah, we'd like to be able to use it.
Okay, just so you're on go.
So the only thing I would add to that is if we, you know, like, do we have like a sign-out sheet or something? Can we create like that, just so we know when and, is it a he or she, when he or she leaves and when he or she comes back?
I doubt as gender-specific, however, we do have a sign-out sheet that we used to use for keys and what have you.
Yeah, stuff like that.
But it would have to be at the fire department.
Yeah.
We'll give it to the chief.
Yeah.
Yeah, just something like, since it's gonna be regular, I'm not saying this is you, but as I've learned over the years, things kind of unintentionally disappear for a while sometimes. It's like, wow, where'd that go? And then you have to track it through four people to find it, so. But other than that, if there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so we've got it. Good luck with those classes, and thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, I'm gonna skip back up to A, which is Fire and Rescue Station Project Update. So I think we need to hear from the construction manager.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Mike Povero, Eastern Seaboard Construction Manager of the fire station. Couple issues. The first, which is probably most important to me, and I want to make sure the board and everybody is on the same page, as Matt knows, we had a meeting last week up there, and the topic was the additional tanks and pump house and so forth that needs to be put in to make the sprinkler system compliant with the state fire marshal. Before we get on that path, I want to make sure that the board and everybody understands, I have completed my work that was the original scope of work for that fire station. This work is above and beyond what was intended, initially laid out, thought, or budgeted for that fire station. Is kind of everybody in agreement on that aspect of the scope of Eastern Seaboard and the construction manager?
I would say I'm 90% with you. I would just make the argument that one of the things in scope is to have a compliant building, so in my book, this is additional steps to make it compliant. I think that's the.
And that's fair enough, but the local authority agent didn't do his job and get it done, so we are now in this predicament and where we are because of that.
But I would agree, from the standpoint of things that weren't sort of in the, on the radar when we're planning things out, is what you're now doing, so.
Yeah.
I would.
I just wanted to bring that up first, so that everybody's crystal clear on moving forward from this point. In that meeting last week, Jeff Murphy, and the board's familiar with Jeff, he's a sprinkler engineer for SFC Engineering. The board has brought him on board. He's been on board for, I'm gonna say at least a couple of months now. I don't know how accurate that is, but he's been on for a while. It was agreed upon in that meeting that Jeff would follow through with the sprinkler design. He's got a preliminary one done that he emailed to me, I think, Monday. The fire pump that the town of Plastow graciously offered to us at no charge died on the vine. Matt, you heard why last night, but, not last night, but at that meeting. The pump won't work without a lot of retrofit in this situation, because that one was fed out of a tower with water above, so it was being charged. It wasn't a drawer or a head pump, which is, now has to draw it out of the ground. So we need to go get a completely different pump for this application.
And it is 47 years old?
Correct.
Yeah, so folks at home shouldn't think we're talking about a couple-year-old pump.
No, no.
Listen, if you make it sound like 47 years, it's ancient.
Well, I.
It may be to you.
Well, I think it is to a pump, because if you took a 47-year-old pickup truck, pulled it out of the garage and drove it, you're gonna be doing some work to it. So it's mechanical. It was a great offer from the town of Plastow, very generous, but it's just not gonna work.
I think, and you know, we can get some head nods here, but I would propose to the board that we, you know, support what Mike's trying to say here. I think we did our due diligence. Like you said, it was a great offer, and it was something we needed to look at. We looked at it, we're just, we don't want to spend too much good money looking into doing that when it's not gonna work, so hopefully the board supports that.
Yeah, and the next phase for Jeff was gonna be, bring a pump guy in, and they were gonna spend days, if not weeks, checking sales and pulling it apart, and as you said, Matt, you're just gonna start throwing money into something that we just don't know, at the end of the day, would even work. I mean, besides the fact you'd have to change how it works. Instead of head, you're gonna be drawing, you know, drafting out of it, so, just not the right pump, unfortunately. In that meeting, it was also agreed upon to complete this project with the subs that are already on board, so those guys will get the bid specs, they'll look at the remaining work, and hopefully, fingers crossed, we'll have a hard number in a couple of weeks, which at that point, I'll give to the board. You guys can review it. You'll see what that number is, and then we'll go from there. Because as I've been telling everybody right along, for months and months now, I have no idea what that number's gonna be until Jeff finishes his design. So that's where we stand.
Yeah, I think what we talked about on, excuse me, on Thursday was, all these stakeholders are going to kind of write down what it is they need to do to get it over the goal line, approximately how much that's gonna cost, and so the board can see that, so we know exactly what's gonna happen from here on in.
Okay. The one other player that's gonna stay in the mix, it goes to what I just said, but to clarify, the architect is gonna stay on board, because there's a pump house that needs to be built, small, but, you know, Jeff is kind of subterranean and pipe-related, mechanical, and the architect will do the small structure part of it and make sure that it matches the station that's there. That's all. Pretty simple. And that's all I have.
Yeah, you know, the only thing I would add is, if we, you know, as we move forward here, we're gonna get the numbers, and we'll make decisions based on the numbers, I think the board's in agreement, we are going to do this, you know, it's, we can't not.
No, no, just to add to that, you can't. It's not an option. The state fire marshal has drawn the line because of how this laid out, and he was adamant. This gets done, and he's put a completion date, I don't know what it is in my head right now, but there is a completion date.
I think it was August 31st.
Yeah.
So if you're looking at, you know, middle of April, when the, you know, conditions are, start to get better, you know, just as a penciled-in date to start this. So we'll see some numbers, but like I said, we're doing this, no matter what. If, you know, I've often said, all these buildings in this town, regardless of how old they are, whether it's this one, or the one we're in right now, or the fire station, we have to continue to invest in the buildings. In this, there might be an additional investment to get this done, but it has to be done. Hopefully not, but if there is, you know, we do have, and I think we're talking about it later, maybe not tonight, but in the future, the sort of goal, at least when I voted for it, was to build a new fire station, we're selling the old one, and we're gonna get a return of some sort on selling the old one, that can be invested back into the town, so stuff like that'll help. We do have the, what do we call the account with the rental?
The Eight Merrimack Road rental.
So the Eight Merrimack Road rental account, we've been collecting for, I think, four years now, and that was designed to invest in our town buildings, so we do have options, and, you know, I think I'm preaching to the choir, but we're gonna get it done somehow, so.
Can, instead of stepping away from the podium and come back, I got a question as a resident, not as a construction manager, off of that, springboarding off of that. The sale of that fire station, that happening sooner than later?
Yeah, I think the, I think the general consensus among the board is to let the election happen on March 12th, and then when we reconvene, we're starting to look at other town properties from a valuation standpoint, so that'll make it on the list, and we'll start the process.
So let me throw another one, again, as a resident out there. Whatever the number is from the sale of that fire department, where do the proceeds of that money go?
General fund.
General fund, right? So it's.
Well, can it be packaged in somehow with language that if there's a deficit on the construction of this fire department, not knowing what this number is? Because I don't. Can that offset, if it was to go beyond the bond?
Here's the way, here's the way I look at it, is without a warrant article, you can't take money from a sale like that and put it anywhere, right? We're all gonna vote on March 12th for those things, take money out of the general fund to, right?
Yeah.
So we can't do that in whatever it is, three weeks, right? Because it's not gonna be on the warrant. So the answer is no directly, however, we, the money's gonna be going back to the town, it's just in the general fund. It's not, it's not direct, directed like you just asked, into the bond, for example.
Well, not into the bond. I wasn't working out to go into the bond.
But you know, into the project, I guess you'd say?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, it's unanticipated revenue, therefore, it's used to offset taxes.
Right, so the town gets it, not directly.
But you could use it in the future, like next year, like we're doing this year.
Well, yeah, but there'd have to be a warrant article to expend.
Yeah.
The other option, too, is toward the end of the year, there's a possibility that you might be able to speak with the commissioner at Department of, I'm sorry, Department of Revenue, and ask if it's an emergency, well, we've gotta get this done. They might allow us to use some of that money. We've done it in the past, but they have to approve it.
Yeah. And, you know, before, and I want to say this, before, we have to underline the fact we're kind of, we're kind of planning out loud, is what we're doing right now at this moment. We don't know for a fact that we're even gonna have to do this.
Nope, it may be a non-issue, I'm just bringing it up.
Exactly, I just want, like I say, Mike, our millions of viewers, and I want them to know that's what it is. The other thing, too, is just came to mind, is I'm not sure where the interest is right now.
I think it was 16,000 at year-end.
Yeah.
I think that's what we saw.
So is that a similar situation where that's, I don't know if it's unanticipated revenue, but it's general fund?
No, that was part of the original warrant article.
It's in the bond, yeah, yeah.
So that's, that's another, for those who don't know what we're talking about, what did we get, what did we get, 1.?
6 million.
So when we put 1.6 million into the bank, it's an interest-bearing account, so interest accrues, and as Jim just said, it's part of the project, so that's there as well, so. I think the fire chief had something to add.
I just, good evening. I just have just a little quick thing. As the board is aware, prior to this getting, this project getting approved, I said I don't inspect or approve plans in my own house. So we don't go down this road again. Is the main individual that's the authority having jurisdiction gonna be involved in this plan review, so we don't stand up here in another six months? I'm not trying to throw nobody under the bus, but the project manager has already said it enough times. Is the authority having jurisdiction? Was he part of that meeting on Thursday? Is he going to be part of the sprinkler plan reviews and everything else going farther, going further?
You're talking about the building department?
The authority having jurisdiction.
The building department? That's who you mean, right?
Correct.
Okay, they were there, they were there.
Did the authority have jurisdiction?
Yeah.
Because again, from the fire department's half, we have a fire chief.
Sure.
Who's gonna inspect the town's house, because we don't, again, we don't do our own.
Right, right.
We just want to make sure, because I thought it was a six-month window from the time the temporary CO was given, which makes it less than August. So that, I'm, from my half, as the board's getting, maybe a little, want to keep an eye at the end on the funds? I'm trying to keep an eye at the end to make sure we don't go over time.
So, and thank you for reminding me, because this was discussed at the meeting on Thursday, that, and I think the board's aware of, and I think the board understands why you're taking that position, right? As you said, you don't inspect your own house, so we're not, we're not anticipating, right, that the chief's gonna do it, correct?
Well, with all due respect.
Yeah.
If it's such as for another day, but we wouldn't be interested if it's time to follow that protocol.
Yeah, so what the board, I think, one, the board agrees that our fire chief will not be the inspector, and then after that, we need to decide what we want to do. A couple of options were thrown around, one of which was neighboring-town fire chief, or somebody like that. So, so you're right, we're not really there yet, but I think clarity around that was good tonight, so. Are you a construction manager or resident?
No, I'm neither, no. I'm going back to my chair, unless you guys got questions.
Anybody have any more questions?
Makes perfect sense.
So we'll, we'll look for that paperwork at some point in the next couple of days, it sounds like?
As far as the price?
Yeah.
Oh, it's gonna be a couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks, okay.
Yeah, we just, I just got the, and it's a, it's a rough schematic and sketch that I got from Jeff, which was based upon last week's meeting.
Yeah.
So he's fine-tuning it, and then I can send this out to the subs, and they can put numbers to it.
Okay.
But I anticipate a couple of weeks before you have that number.
That's fine with me, just wanted to kind of have an idea of what to expect, so.
Mm-hmm.
I'm good. Everybody good?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, have a good night.
You, too. Let's see. So C is Review Questionnaire from Senator Hassan, so.
And Pappas.
Well, yeah, and Congressman Pappas, so, so everybody's aware, what we did is, we put the invite out to elected officials, and our, one of our senators and our congressman came back, and basically what I, what I think is they're, they're considering it, but they need more information. So really quick here, I'd like to just blow through this questionnaire, and this is gonna help us as well to know what's gonna happen on that day.
I think the answers that were already posted are perfectly adequate.
Yeah, but there are some blanks, so.
And some deserve to be blanks.
Yeah, so really quick, March 3rd is the date, March 10th is a snow date. Timing, you know, for the dignitaries to arrive, I would, I would say 12 o'clock is the start of the open house, 1 o'clock is the ceremony, correct?
Yep.
So sometime in the middle there, we can give them location, I think.
Do you want to set a time for them?
I would say 12:30 for them.
Okay, 12:30, so then I could, because they're looking for this to get sent back to them.
Yeah, and location, I think we're, we're good with, right?
Yeah.
Reserve parking spot, we can make that happen. On-site event contact?
Yes, so who's going to handhold them, meet them, greet them?
You can, you can give them my phone number.
Okay.
Because you're not gonna be there, Diane.
No, I'm not.
You're traveling.
Right.
So 7 is where will the above-listed event contact greet the senator or congressman, for that matter, on arrival? And I would, I would say at the parking space, but we can be flexible there. In other words, wave them in, park.
Why don't you just, why don't we just say main entrance?
Perfect.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't want to put these answers in because I wasn't sure.
So who will be in attendance? This is more around a total number. I mean, we're just throwing it out there, 100? Is that too much, too little?
Does that count?
50?
Residents as well?
50?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say.
By the way, since I know Senator Hassan, you want me to be her contact, you can have Chris Pappas.
Sure.
Okay.
Well, she'll recognize, I assume she'll recognize me.
No, I just need to tell, because they're two separate ones, so I have to keep them separate, that's all.
Yeah.
So you're doing, okay.
I'll put 50-plus.
Yeah, 50-plus, I think is more reasonable. And then VIPs, you know, I think what they're both looking for is each other's name, I think, so, but Diane, you know who's RSVP'd, so you'll be able to.
So do you want me to just put like?
You could, you could say Board of Selectmen, you know, state, state reps, you know, you don't, not necessarily the names, and then if for some reason you do get an official, before this goes out, which I doubt you will, an official confirmation from the congressman and the senator, you could include them, but you could say something more to the effect, we haven't also, we have also invited, you know.
Okay.
Did we invite the governor?
We invited the governor.
Okay.
Yeah, haven't heard from him. Did not invite the president, but.
I'm looking over, and Diane's saying that we did not invite the governor.
I thought we invited the governor.
Oh, did we?
Yeah, I think we did, yeah.
Okay.
Because I was gonna say, he's very likely to show up.
Yeah, I mean, all of this stuff is based on what else they have going on, right? It's a Sunday, too, which kind of sometimes is like untouchable for people. It's open to the media, right?
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna, we're gonna put the word out, right, to the usual media sources. Program agenda, and note whether or not it's draft, we can look at that in a second. If there is a speaking program, please list the order of the speakers, including the person slated to introduce Senator Hassan. My thing would be, it sounds like either the chairman or the vice-chairman of the Board of Selectmen will be speaking. However, we do have, the moderator is gonna be more of the emcee, so I would say that's who we put down as who's introducing, right?
So is she gonna be, are you letting, are they gonna be speaking, both Senator Hanson, Hassan, and?
I think they're invited to speak, but it's up to them whether they, you know, if they have, if they have something they want to say, I think we should certainly let them, but I don't think it's a showstopper if they don't.
I was just gonna say, I'd rather see this more for local people, and yes, our senator and our congressman have showed up in support of the effort of the people of the town of Newton to create this building. I'd rather hear from the fire chief and the builder. I, that's much more appropriate than having a federal senator stand up and.
I, I, yeah, I tend to agree with where Jim's going, however, it's traditionally, what I've seen is anything like this, the higher up in the kind of food chain, if you will, you have to defer to that. If they want to speak, let them speak, but if not, that's okay, too, is the way I see it.
They're in support of it, so.
Yeah.
Well, it's just, question C, I actually find offensive. Are there any other notable members in the audience the senator should recognize? No, it's the moderator should recognize people in the audience as an introduction.
And, and I think, I think that's, that's probably a pretty good idea is, and this is probably what will happen, I think this is, actually, I think this is just a first pass. If they do write it in ink on their calendar that they're coming, we're gonna get another phone call where they're gonna say, what do you want us to talk about, if anything? And I think Jim's right, I think that all they should worry about is, you know, their little three minutes or whatever. But yeah, our moderator is gonna be the one to point out, here's, here's our building committee members, and, you know, that, because he will be the best informed, I think. And, and what is the overall setup of the event? No stage, no podium, right? We're doing this.
There is a podium.
There is a podium, okay.
No stage.
No stage.
The front. The front entrance.
Front entrance, so what if it's really cold?
The problem is the breaking of the hose ribbon cutting.
Yeah.
It's outside.
Okay, so if there's, if it's really cold, can we do speeches inside in the breaking of the hose outside?
I don't see why not.
It depends on the occupancy.
Yeah. Can we have a fire watch at the, at the fire station?
Yeah, we can have it inside.
I want to be politically correct right now.
Yeah.
We thought we have jurisdiction.
Yes, you can have, in the apparatus bay, there'll be chairs and tables set up in the building, so if you need speeches in the apparatus bay, fine, then you can come outside. It's, it's not gonna be a four-hour event.
True, yeah.
It's also, it's gonna be a lot less formal than, this sounds like it was, it's a questionnaire for a fairly formal event where, you know, a dinner is served, the senator will be seated at this table.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's one-size-fits-all, I guess, for whatever they might be doing. So Diane, I can, number 12, we can work out more with that, but I think the most important thing is that to consider is, if it is really cold, we need to be inside, and you're right, chief, half hour, 45 minutes tops is how I envision the whole thing to go. It's not a four-hour ceremony, and then go outside, do whatever we need to do. And the attire recommendations in letter F, I would tell people to bring coats, you know.
Yeah, but fire engine rub could be appropriate.
That would be appropriate, yeah. No, no black tie. All right, the.
And the same thing can be used on the Chris Pappas. And the same thing can be used on the Chris Pappas.
Right, right, it's a, we, if it's not the exact same questions, we can.
Except for one thing, that's all.
What's that?
If Puritan is going to cater, and I already answered, no.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah. For those who don't know, the congressman's family owns.
That's actually, I, I missed that question on his.
Congressman's family owns the Puritan back room in Manchester, so he doesn't want, I would assume, he doesn't want to be at an event catered by his family because that would look.
Oh, okay.
You know, so.
I was reading it the other way. If my family doesn't do the catering, I don't show up.
No, I'm sure it's not that way, so.
So, the event, is it indoors or outdoors or a combination?
So, it sounds like it will be a combination? Okay.
Okay.
Three hours, yeah.
Considering it's gonna be a lovely day, balmy in the 60s, a light jacket.
That'd be nice.
Yeah, the, the nor'easter comes on the 12th, just remember that.
Well, yeah, I was just gonna say, the, it doesn't snow until election day.
Exactly, and so, chief, and it goes without saying, just to say it out loud, is if we do get these sorts of dignitaries, they're probably gonna want a guided tour from the fire chief.
That's, that's easy, okay, that's easy. The only thing from hour half is the window from 12 to 1, because that was one of the questions. If the ribbon hose cutting is in the front, if there are individuals inside the fire station at 12:30, and we're gonna do the ceremony outside at 1, if they wanna stay inside the station, they're more than welcome to stay inside the station, we're not gonna push everybody
Right.
outside. There are refreshments. I don't know if it's on the board's agenda, but the association made a donation, we've had several other individuals make a donation, so there will be refreshments. The refreshments will not be served until after the ribbon ceremony will be done. Ribbon, hose, however you wanna do it, that's, right after that is when the refreshments will be served. If it's cold, there'll be hot chocolate, there'll be coffee, there'll be warm beverages for everyone.
Sounds good.
And the station will be open, there will be firefighters there and officers that will be willing to give tours for those that have not toured the fire station yet.
And it goes without saying, if you get a call, right, all bets are off.
We'll do the same thing we do, no matter where, the old station, the new station, if there's an event, there are members assigned to certain trucks, so you're not gonna get the whole cavalry go out, depending on the call.
Yeah.
You, you, especially if it's EMS, you'll probably just get two or three
Right.
members leave on that half. The only question I had, when we're talking about invitees, uh, do you have a chaplain? Are we gonna have a chaplain?
I, I am confident we'll have at least one, we might actually have two, so.
Okay.
Working on that, but that is part of the agenda.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure, just, just asking.
Yeah, no problem. So, just really quick, the agenda is 1 o'clock, town moderator is gonna welcome everyone, as Jim said, he's gonna acknowledge the dignitaries and, including the building committee. He's gonna act as the emcee and he'll speak about probably the history of the project. And then at that point, introduce the pastor or priest to do the invocation. And then after the invocation is done, introduce the chairman or vice chair of the Board of Selectmen to speak. And then, it looks like right after the, we hear from the board, the fire chief has the opportunity to speak, so you're prepared to say a few words, right? And then, it looks like the emcee comes back up and asks for everybody, ask the chairman, the fire chief to disconnect the hose coupler. Uh, the, the, as I've read, the official, traditional, rather than a ribbon cutting, right, that's what you do, so. And then the ceremony concludes, so somewhere in there, I would recommend, we have to decide, what do you guys think about if we do have multiple, if we have a senator or a congressman who wanna speak, where would you wanna slot them? Should they be before or after?
Protocols. Standard protocol is declining order of precedent. Senator first, congressman, local personnel, oh, sorry, state. If the governor shows up and wants to say something, he would come after them. Then, local. Puts the fire chief basically at the bottom of the list, but that's the important words that we wanna hear. Yeah.
So, I, I think what that means is Diane is somewhere between where you have the moderator and chairman, right in the middle there, we can, if they do confirm, we can slot them in there.
Before the invocation?
After the invocation.
Okay, and before the chairman, the introduction of the chairman, so that's where you're gonna put it in.
Yeah, and as Jim said, if for some reason we get a senator and a congressman, the.
Senator goes first.
Senator goes first.
It's just like when the moderator recognizes people, it's senator, congressman, state officials, local.
Yeah. And the governor would be, be third in that line, if, if the governor did it, too. Who knows, maybe we'll get all of them. I'd be shocked.
Well, that would be.
But, um, I, I think we've kind of reviewed that to death, everybody, everybody's good with how we're organized for that day, and I guess we'll just, as far as making the call in regards to the weather, if this is all starting at noon, we have plenty of time in the morning to kinda get on the phone with people.
If I may make, but all due respect, I would make the call probably on the Friday, because you'd be so.
Sorry, I would not wait for the last minute because the refreshments, some of them are gonna be ordered a few days earlier, and I'm sure nobody wants, say, a cake that's 10 days old, if it gets postponed, so we'll all have to be on the same plate towards the end of next week. If it looks like it's gonna be bad, then we can, you know, kinda put a hold, because I think they need two to three days to order the cake.
Well, what we do with the parade, by the way, is the road agent is my, like, yea or nay guy. If he's, if he's telling me weather's not gonna be good, I tend to believe him. So, we should plan on, I'm sure he'll be excited, he's probably watching this at home right now, we'll bring him into the decision sometime on Friday or whatever it needs to be.
That's fine.
One thing Diane may wanna do is if people confirm.
I'm not gonna be here, I leave Thursday at 28. So, March 1st, somebody's gonna have to take over this.
Well, you're gonna be the contact person for Chris Pappas, hopefully they'll get back to you to say that they'll be there. I'll do Maggie. We just have to make sure that we find out from them how they want their title. Like, if the governor shows up, he says excellency. You know, senators and congressmen have honorary titles, just like state reps and.
So, wouldn't Bob Disnowitz know that?
Yeah.
Excuse me?
Wouldn't Bob Disnowitz know that?
I'm not certain if.
Yeah, we can figure all that.
Yeah.
Well, we'll have it verified before Diane goes and all that.
Well, it'd be nice if, if they would respond quickly.
Oh, yeah, well, when you think of it, where, what is it, a week from Sunday?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, the, yeah, well, we'll know, plenty of time. But Nancy's gonna be available, too, right, if we need, yeah, so. I think we're good. All right, we'll move off of that topic. So, that brings us onto F, review pilot program, commercial trash hauling. Anything specific here we need to?
I assume that's why Pete is here.
I'm sorry, which one are you on?
Trash hauling.
Trash hauling.
So, C was reminding us that it is, you know, the, the pilot program has ended.
Yeah.
So, is there anything that he needs to do that needs to happen to continue?
Actually, we were remiss, we were supposed to in December, review it and put out if anybody wished to be in a lottery, because it was supposed to, by our policy, it was supposed to start January 1st.
Yeah, so I mean, I would, first of all, I would put it out there, are we happy with how the pilot has gone? Even though I, we blew some dates here, are we happy with how it's going?
Pete, are we happy?
Very happy, absolutely, it worked out great.
He's on the front line, so he would know best. So, I would, I would move that we don't, let me put it this way, I would move that we, we take the word pilot out of this program and, and continue forward as it, as it, as it pertains to Steve St. Seer.
But we also need to, to open it up if anybody else would like to.
Yeah, that was gonna be after that, but. So, that was up.
In that case, I would move that we extend Mr. St. Seer's.
So, did you do two motions here?
So, I was, I was motioning, but forget it, because Jim's is better, and I, I, tonight I'm confused because I'm the chairman for the night, so we'll let somebody else make them up.
I, I will move to extend Steve St. Seer's, I can't remember if we called it license, to haul trash to the Newton dump in accordance with his best, with our policy.
Well, it's basically taking him off probation, pilot program probation.
Well, no, because it has, it has to be renewed annually.
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion.
So, I, I think, I think Jim's got it right, and then the only thing you might wanna add is the, you know, the date that it will expire now.
Uh, yeah, it.
Is there a fee involved, too, Jim?
Well, that's.
I was, I was just gonna say, expiration date would be December 31st, 2019, and he is required to pay the, um, the fee as, in accordance with policy.
Yeah. Okay, you still a second?
Yeah.
All right. Any discussion?
Yeah, Diane, Diane wants to kill me for that.
That was a long one.
I have no idea what I'm gonna put in there, because it doesn't make any sense the way you, you motioned it at this point.
You want me to clean it up and make a, restate it?
Nah, I'll work on it, I'll work on it and clean it up.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, um, do we want to kinda dig into the archives and find the original posting we put on the website?
Yeah.
At that point, we're looking for people for a pilot, but we can edit it now, and now it's looking for people who wanna participate. Did we, I think we put a limit.
I believe it's three.
Yeah, so, we can just put it out there, my gut feeling is we're probably not gonna get any responses, we would've gotten them already, had.
We, we may not, but, I mean.
We have to do it.
Stay, stay transparent and
Yeah.
legal.
So, um, maybe we can have, Diane, if you dig that out and just clean it up a little bit and email it out to all of us, and we can weigh in if, if we don't like the wording, but I think, I think basically, as we discussed, whatever it was a year ago, we wanted to, once it was successful, we wanted to open it up.
How about this, I will move that we post on the website and probably, maybe a small ad in Carriertown, announcing that we had two slots available for the 2019 trash hauling year.
We don't have to do this every year, though, do we?
Yes, we do.
Where does it say that?
It's in the policy. I know, I helped write it.
I just.
This doesn't make sense.
I, I'm fine with it, I just think, I don't know if we need the Carriertown, I know it's free, right, but it's not.
Not all.
So, I just assume the website for.
Well, the, the, the reason I'm saying Carriertown is that not everybody goes to the Newton website who would know to look there.
Right.
And in further discussion, the reason it's, it's done annually is that if you have somebody who starts out well and then goes downhill, they're not invited to apply for the following year. Because remember, there's a mechanism in the policy that if we have four people that apply, there's a, a lottery will be held in December to award.
I don't know, I just thought it would be like any other business, he started his business, he did the pilot program, so just let him run his business now, and he doesn't have to come back to us unless we.
According to policy, we give preference to, um, pre-existing people who have already had. However, you need a way to be able to remove somebody that is not.
Well, he doesn't work for the town, it's like any business that's doing business in town, we can't tell them to leave town because they're a crappy business person.
Uh, we, we do have the, the power because they're using public resources
They use them naturally.
to dispose of their trash. I mean, if, if we have this young man standing up here in November and says, yeah, you know how you picked up that other person? Well, that other person, you know, we have one who respects the rules, we have somebody else who's continually a problem.
Mm-hmm, well, absolutely.
We, we need a mechanism to be able to disinvite them. And according to, to council, you make it an annual renewal.
Well, I could see the annual renewal, I was just talking about the advertising of getting more people to do it.
If we had three people already on board, but there are people out there that, you know, this is February 19th, in July, somebody who might actually be willing to do it hasn't, has not seen this, has not read the minutes, has absolutely no idea, so yes, annually, you do need to.
Right, yeah. I'm good.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who seconded that motion?
It was Larry.
Second for discussion, yeah.
Just.
So, that's unanimous.
Should be able to second.
Anything else, Pete, that you've observed or any?
No, the current guy, Steve St. Seer, again, very professional, courteous, never any issues with him. Takes care of everything he brings in, never leaves anything on the ground, great guy.
How, how is the recycling aspect of it going?
Good, yeah, he brings in a lot of cardboard, not so much the commingled, but doesn't or mix it in with the trash, he does keep it separate.
Very good, I'm glad to hear it.
Very good.
All right, I think, thanks for, for stepping up there, Pete, and I think we're good with this topic.
Thank you.
Thanks. And we've got, um, G, Comcast franchise fee memo to bookkeeper.
Uh, that's your typical letter, allowing her to cut the check to go into the cable revolving fund. The quarterly check.
I'll read it into the record.
Okay.
Uh, this is to Kimberly K. Hughes, bookkeeper at town of Newton. On March 12th, 2013, warrant article 7 was passed to establish a revolving fund for the purpose of providing cable access for public, educational, or governmental use. The Board of Selectmen received a cable franchise fee check dated February 1st, 2019, in the amount of $23,826.71 for the months of October, November, and December of 2018, which is 5% of the total revenue received of $476,533.01. Of this amount, $2,382.71 or 0.5% goes to the cable revolving fund, and $21,444.45 stays with the town of Newton. Please prepare a check in the amount of $2,382.45. Please prepare a check in the amount of $2,382.71 to go into the cable revolving fund, with this amount to come from the unassigned fund balance from the cable revenues received in 2018. Thank you for your attention to this matter. It's basically a form letter that we sign every year to ask the bookkeeper to transfer that money into the--
So, are you making a motion to sign it?
I'm moved to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. If you don't mind, I just need that. Thank you. All right, so we're gonna sign that. So, we have H now, which is a proposal that we asked for, just starting to get an idea of what would be involved in selling the Two Amesbury Road property. So, for those people who don't know, Two Amesbury Road is the former police station that was sold, I believe, in 2013. Correct? Something like that?
Yeah.
Sold by the town in 2013 to a business, I believe it was, and as a result of some tax deeding, it came back under the town in, I believe, it was 2016, or 2017, I think.
2017.
2017, so I'm not sure how much of this detail we can, as far as numbers goes, we can, can keep confidential at this point.
There, there's a proposal before us in order to liquidate the property from being town-held to returning to the tax rolls.
We're just voting on his fee, aren't we, to do it?
So, there is no fee if the property sells. Do you look at A?
Well, there, there is the potential of it costing the town should the third party fail to close on the property, or, well, or if Newton cancels the sale.
Right. But there is no, if the sale goes through, there is no fees to the town.
Right.
In this auction business, we've used before.
Right. Yeah, I think they actually did it the first time. They auctioned it off the first time.
Which is funny. So, I mean, we have, the, the auctioneer has recommended kind of a set starting bid here, and some other things to go along with it.
Yeah, we do have to make sure that the, any reserve is, at a minimum, the outstanding taxes and maintenance expenditures that we have expended on the property.
It has, it is.
Because, and for those watching at home, me personally, I think the board agrees with me. We don't like being in the real estate business here in town, so we'd like to get rid of this property, and do so sooner rather than later, because there is upkeep that goes along with it. And then, hopefully, we don't see this piece of property again under the town, but I would-- You know, it's up to the board, I, this doesn't, because of the fee that may or may not be incurred, I don't think this needs to go to bid, unless the board thinks differently. I mean, I, I think it's in the best interest of the town just to go with this proposal and get things moving. And just so people know at home, this is the more complicated of the properties we wanna sell, because of the tax deeding issue.
Right.
The fire station and, and what else do we have? We have, like, some landlocked pieces of land. But the fire station will be a little easier to do in a real estate, traditional real estate type sale, because we own it.
Right. Well, I mean, technically, we own this, it's--
Yeah, but--
The disposition of the monies.
Yeah, that's, that's the word, dispositioning, it'll be different.
So, do you need a motion to hire?
Motion to have the chairperson sign--
I'll make a motion for the chairperson to sign the auction agreement between James R. St. Jean Auctioneers and the Town of Newton for the property at Two Amesbury Road.
So, I would just, I would second with a friendly amendment of the acting chair.
Acting chair, okay.
Chair pro tem.
Chair pro tem.
Accepted.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's unanimous. Get that one moving, and then, like we said earlier, our plan is, once the election's over, we wanna start talking about selling the old fire station. Okay. Other business.
I don't think they have any other business.
No, you have the--
What's he hanging around for?
No, the announcements.
No, were they on the phone or not?
As far as what?
Oh.
It's just an announcement. Oh, that's nice.
All right, why don't we move with, with six?
Okay. I move to sign the vendor manifest dated 1/19/2019, in the amount of $739,880.05 and 5 cents.
Second.
Of that, $676,000 goes towards the March Sandborn Regional School District payment.
So, we have a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll do number two.
I'll do the, move to sign the fire rescue station vendor manifest dated 2/19/2019, in the amount of $4,167.50.
Second.
All in, we'll give it to Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to sign payroll manifest for pay period 2/3/2019, to 2/16/2019, with a pay date of 2/21/2018.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. That was all for that, right?
Do we have to say A and B?
So, we have an announcement here that we received full payment for EOC equipment project grant in the amount of $35,527.0 from the state of New Hampshire.
Nice job.
Excellent.
Good job.
Thank you.
And I think it's our EOC director that deserves most of the support there, and that, that is for the generator?
No, the equipment.
Equipment.
The equipment, okay.
Which consists of what?
Security cameras, laptops.
TV, security, laptop.
Good job, Lamb. Excellent.
So, that is $35,000 of equipment the company, the town will benefit from, but did not have to pay for.
Yes.
So, that's good. Okay, and B, we received the state portion of the EOC generator grant in the amount of $8,500. So, same thing, thank you for that as well.
We, we should let people know, this is not the federal grant that has also been applied for to replace the Scott packs.
Right.
And just on a side note, they're gonna be starting to pull the generator out tomorrow of the old station.
Oh, good.
All right, so I think--
Might be stopping by.
I think that's it, unless we have other announcements, we'll be, we'll have one more meeting on, what is it, March 6th? Or March 5th?
19, 26, 3--
March 5th, and then, the 12th will be town meeting day, so get the snow shovels, boots, and everything ready. And candidate's night in this room tomorrow night at 7, right?
Refreshments served.
Refreshments not served at that one, apparently. And it will be, it'll be live on TV as well, right?
One can hope.
Right. So, we have a, a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we'll see you later. Thank you.